Your seat. That's up to her.
Yes, Thursday at ten.
You can have a seat. Actually.
I just talked to Cliff then, so he said he can make it.
Thursday at ten.
Oh, that's true. So you're not, oh, I thought you were already, oh, okay. Why, why not?
Thursday at ten, we're gonna be here, right?
And you guys want to point someone else, so if no one's available, you can point your number to someone else, because you don't have to have to let that person.
Okay, we are live.
Is he available?
I don't know.
Oh, we can ask him.
He available Thursday at ten?
Can you give me the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Bourbon County Commission Meeting, August ninth. I would like to welcome our candidate, Ed Latt, Nelson Bly. It's in the audience. He's not sworn in yet, but I'm sure he will be by next Tuesday, so congratulations for your win. So looking forward to working with you. Okay, moving right along.
Uh, I make a motion to approve minutes from July eighteenth, twenty-sixth, and July twenty-ninth.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Come in, Eric. There he is. Good, good, good. I guess.
All right. Few items here, housekeeping items, kinda asphalting. We did finish fifty-fifth from Yellowstone to Zink. Got that completed last week. Nice and warm project. And we are up on Maple Forty-Fifth and Eighty of that area, west of Union Town. Currently started yesterday on it, doing the base coat, and then still working on the base coat today, and then we'll be putting a leveling coat on.
How many feet you got to do up there? How many?
I'm not exactly sure. I don't have that number right in front of me. It's like three thousand and some tons.
That's what I was thinking, but.
Thirty-one hundred tons, somewhere in there, give or take.
I knew it wasn't full, ma, I didn't think.
Right.
Well, good.
So anyhow, we'll be getting that going. Update on the compost permit?
Oh, the story continues.
This is like a two-year problem.
I, I don't even think I have a letter.
Twenty-year problem, maybe. I don't know.
It's a, it's a year and five months, I think, or somewhere in there.
Yeah, a long, long time. I bet it wasn't anything serious.
Something that was supposed to be, you know, expedited is taking a little while. Anyhow, I did get an email yesterday from Emery. He says, I've received no comments regarding the addition of the compost facility. So he's gonna begin the processing, the application to go through concurrence to get signed permit. Requires eight signatures, um, plus the signed permit. If he forgets to update me on the signature process, feel free to contact him. So that tells me we're gonna be a little while on the signature process.
Yeah, so that's eight different departments. They haven't been involved with it yet. They're gonna have a lot of questions.
Yeah, so anyhow, that's where we are on, on the composting permit. Prairie Pathways. Let me give you these. They have been in touch with me in regards to, I know you approved the signs going west of Bourbon County. They're ready to put the signs in going east. I think you, they, when they were here the last time, they'd made mention of all those. There's a map on the back page that shows the locations.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've already approved, we approved this a long time ago.
I don't know that you approved the placement of these. You approved the placement of the previous signs. There's eighteen signs to be installed. If you're good with it, I'll get them. I don't know if we have to have a motion or not to put them in, or not, how that works.
I mean, I thought we already did it, but.
Yeah, I think we already did it. I mean, it's always good to, you know.
Yeah.
Re-do it?
To redo the motion, just to be safe.
For the extra eighteen.
Actual location of it.
Are there fundraisers in the sign and the pole? We're just doing the labor?
We're just doing.
I mean, my question, I guess, is this gonna, because we're, aren't we paving on one of these routes, or no?
No.
That's, that deal's not part of it?
No.
No.
Am I making a motion to, I guess, allow the sign placement? My opinion is, we've already made the motion, but I'll go and make another one.
I'll second his almost motion, so. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Sorry, you want it back or not?
Um, roadside mowing. Here's just kind of an updated map where we are as of last Friday for you. Be able to see.
Thank you.
Kinda gives you an idea of whereabouts and where we, where we are.
You're like, no road.
Yeah, so, and I do apologize for the glare when I took the.
Looks like distant trees done.
It's getting closer. I'll have to talk to Andy on that. I'll figure out what's going on there, but I will say on the, uh, on your district, there's Mr. Beth, that we have a part-time person that comes in in the afternoon and mows, so it's taking a little bit longer on that one.
We're special in the northeast, Jim.
I know you are. I appreciate it.
Something like that, so.
It shows.
Anyhow, that's just kind of an update where we're at on that.
Thank you.
My hair is like a third the size of yours.
I know, I know. It's easy to accomplish a hundred percent your hair, so.
Culverts, Tomahawk, a hundred and, actually, two-hundred-and-fifth to a hundred-and-eighty-fifth. Some crossroad tubes are working on ditching up there as well. They've done some ditching. They're gonna do a little more. The greater operator's gonna pull some ditches now in that area, get that gravel back in. And then Kansas, west of Highway Three, same thing, crossroad tubes, and we did one entry tube and ditching there as well. So just giving you update on that, where we're at. Still hauling gravel with the belly dump and the trucks when we can, so when they're not hauling asphalt. Do wanna let you know the stop sign at two-hundred-fortieth and Jayhawk. We did go ahead and replace that. Retro reflectivity on it was one.
Yeah, pretty bad, but yeah, thank you.
So it needed to be replaced on that. And then other than that, that's all I got. Anything for me?
Uh, thanks for letting me sit down and meet with the Van Kepel of the paper.
Absolutely, yes.
Went very well. We got it resolved. We're, we're on our way to a new engine for our paper.
Yep.
And at very reduced cost.
Yes.
So, and you and I, after that meeting, talked about a belly dump. What are your thoughts on that? I know we, we should have money in our insurance fund from the other one.
Right.
Let me express my concerns, and I know what you decide, but, uh, and you'll have the same problem I had, so it's nothing.
Right.
Reflecting on you at all. While we're asphalt, we don't haul no gravel. And we, we've been lucky. We get into a wet winter, we're in trouble, but we haven't been, we haven't had that. So what's your thoughts on buying another belly dump?
I don't have a, any problem with buying another belly dump. Um, I, I think we need to check our budget, make sure where we're at. I'll sit down with Susan and look at that.
Okay.
Um, I know fuel has been very.
It is.
Hard on us this year, um, with the fluctuating prices and what have you. Um, need to kinda get a feel for where we're at with the budget, but.
Yeah.
I, I do not have a problem with buying another belly dump. I think it would help us, um, be able to get more gravel on the road. I, I will say, we are using the belly dump.
Yeah.
All, all week, if we can. We actually had a greater operator last week come in and run the belly dump. So we're trying to keep it going every day so we can keep gravel, but if we had two, that's just that much more gravel. It's about one and a half truck loads.
Yeah, it is.
And, uh.
Well, again, you'll, you'll have the same problem I had. You're laying asphalt, you're not moving gravel, unless you've got some belly dumps to help, so.
Right.
It really might help us this winter by keeping up.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Any thoughts on it, Cliff?
I, I think, look into it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into it.
Thank you.
I mean, we, we're potentially gonna have plenty of rock?
Absolutely.
And that, rock doesn't do any good sitting in the rock where.
Right, I agree.
We had two belly dumps. That's like three dump trucks moving daily.
With that set now, I'm gonna, and Jim, I think Jim will agree, um, you know, I, I don't wanna throw good money after bad and just throw rock on some of these roads that need some care, some ditching, and some, but, you know, all that's been slowly taken care of.
Some slopes, yes.
And we talked about this ditching program, and it's gonna become more aggressive, and.
Yeah.
And hopefully we'll ditch.
I, I will say, um, I was in Crawford County yesterday on gravel roads, um, and I know people like to say our gravel roads are terrible, and everybody else's counties around us are great. Um, I'm not sure what part of the counties they're driving in, but, but ours are, are no worse or better than, than Crawford's. On what I was on. I mean, you got, and this was actually in your district, when I, when I came through, um, let's say the guy down there's doing his, you know, decent job. Can we do better? Well, we all can do better.
Right.
But, um, I will say, our roads were as good or better than, than, than the roads I was on in Crawford, so, um, you know, keep it up.
Yeah, I think we're doing good.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
Nothing for me. Thank you, Eric.
Okay.
Bill, Sheriff Bill Martin, please. Morning, Sheriff.
I'm here today because I guess a couple of weeks ago, there was an individual who was questioning the investigation in regards to some trucks that were seized, and questioning the ability. But I've invited Deputy Metcalf and Deputy Davidson, who are the drug detectives for the sheriff's office, and they will explain how this process works, and we can act in a detail, so we don't jeopardize the criminal investigation of the defendants themselves. So in regards to that, I'll have Deputy Metcalf and Davidson step before the table, have a seat, and they'll explain the situation about that.
Thank you. Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Have a seat.
You may have to move that mic. I don't know where Kevin, where.
Gotta put it in the middle. How about that? I can sit down here. Um, we're here in to, in reference to Mr. Wade's, um.
Can we, let's not use public names, guys.
Do what?
Is it?
He requested a court request to this investigation, and with that court request, that becomes another.
That's correct. They can use a person's name.
Was there another, was there another court request ever made about that court request? There are several.
I don't know.
No, that's okay. Please don't. Let's just not.
Okay.
Just make it simple. Let's just not do it.
Thank you, thank you.
Fair enough. It, it's in reference to a statement about fuzzy numbers. How about that? Is that fair enough?
Okay, that's great. That's good.
All right, all right. Um, we've brought several pieces of documentation to clear up the fuzzy numbers. Um, I'll pass these around. This is a, the front page of the KSOR, Kansas Offense Report. At, at the top, it is open for public record, so that's why I'm passing this around to you guys. At the bottom of it, it will list, um, the property that were seized, was seized, and you can verify that there is eight-point-four pounds, uh, enlisted in the property. I will pass that around. The second is the compliant information on the case. Um, the words or more are listed in that, which would be obviously more than two-point-two pounds. Um, I also brought a copy of the Kansas statutes, um, where it can be verified through KSA law statutes. The charging, what's being charged and what's being charged for, and the quantities for the charges listed. Um, I'll go ahead and pass that around. It's on pages five and six. Can go and basically give a brief overlap of the process that went down. Uh, an incident originated just inside of the Bourbon County line, approximately about a mile inside of Bourbon County line, did end inside the city limits of Fort Scott. Um, can't go into much more detail than that. Uh, individual had said they wish to know where it kinda ended at. It did end, end inside the city limits of Fort Scott after starting way out in the county.
Sorry, sorry, Jim. In, so it ended in the city limits, you say?
It did. Started one mile in, in, one mile from the Crawford line, so it just ended inside the city limits, so.
Man, you probably can't answer something. Said something about Allen County, so I'm just curious what that.
Allen County was involved, um, just to help identify.
Says the witness over here, somebody from Allen County.
Yeah, I missed it, Allen County. I, I was just curious.
We just used a piece of their equipment.
I just saw that, so I was just curious. We just used a piece of their equipment.
Correct, so. Um, as far as official weight on any drug seizure, it's not official till the KBI weighs it, anything, and everything is presumptive positive until it is verified to the Kansas Bureau of Investigation Lab. Um, any drug seizure falls under that. We weigh it here. We could tell you, you know, it may weigh more. They may, KBI may lab, may weigh it and say, that's ten pounds, and it's not, not, it's not eight, and they may say it's six pounds, not eight pounds. They give the official verified, testified weight, um, just because they have the tools and everything to do that. They also give the final say, whether it's meth, marijuana, you know, when we send it, it's sent as a white crystal substance, or a clear liquid, or a green leafy substance. We don't pretend to be chemists, or botanists, or anything like that, so anything that we seize is sent and packaged as green leafy substance, white crystal substance, clear liquid substance. We don't send, hey, we're sending you eight pounds of methamphetamine. We don't do that. Um, so, just information, you know, if, if I was wanting to find out how fires are fought, I wouldn't go to a botanist, you know what I mean? So there's kinda some frustration there. Um, if I ever wanna, um, it's kind of a perceived, I would say, not a tact, but kinda slanderish to come and say that a certain department has fuzzy numbers when you don't know how that department operates, and that's, that's why we're here. We don't like the perception of being crooked, or dirty, or fuzzy, or anything like that. I will personally answer as much as I can to any individual that'd like to come speak with me, or Deputy Metc, Detective Metcalf, or the sheriff, or the undersher, we're usually pretty open, and we'll tell you as much as we can tell you. Do you have anything to add? Guys, got any questions?
No, I would like, thank you for coming forward and sharing this information with us, and answering the court requests, because that's what we have to do, being public figures. I appreciate all this information, and I'm sure that person would appreciate it too, so.
Okay.
And as you mentioned, in the public life, we're always gonna get.
Oh, absolutely.
Rocks thrown at us, but that's part of it, so.
I think there is plans for Deputy Trim to come back, uh, next week and address the, uh, issues on the ammunition, whatever concerns there was with our ammunition usage, and, and what we use it for. So just to put that out there for next week's meeting. Anybody wanna, you know, be here for that? They're more than welcome. We'll be back.
Okay.
Just like Deputy Davidson says, since you spoke ahead. Firearms coach and instructor for the sheriff's department will be here next week, once I turn in the form to explain the training process that we go through. Um, there is an individual that is here and who's also participated in our training, firearms training too, so he has the understanding of what's going on. So once the request is put in, I will be back on the agenda.
Oh, good. Thank you, Bill, for responding. Thank you, gentlemen. Cliff, you anything?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you.
Is Bobby here?
Yep.
Oh, there he is.
Bigging around the corner. Hi, Bobby.
They weren't talking loud enough.
Thanks for having me this morning. Real quick, no promises, no promises. Um, but I'm hoping by the end of the month, all of our Bourbon County inmates will be back in Bourbon County.
Great, good deal.
Uh, we've hired some people. Um, we've hired a couple back. Gonna lose another one here next week, but can't keep, uh, two, he's been with me two and a half years, so, um, he's gonna broaden his wings and go do something else, but, um, if we keep on the same track that we're on, we should be pretty good employee-wise and have everybody trained and back and somewhat trained, but, so we can get people back here.
Good deal.
That's good news.
Got any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you for updating us. We appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you for updating up the public here too, so, thank you. Terry Holsey.
I had asked Terry to come to the meeting and kinda give us an update on EMS, and so she's here, and then she has a couple of her, uh, guys that have just passed their paramedic school, and so she's gonna do a little bit of talking.
Morning.
I just wanted to update kinda where we're at, and things that have been going on and changed. July call activity, we had two-hundred-and-ten calls for service, seventy-eight were nine-one-one transports, seven to other ERs, which means when we go to other ERs, we go directly from the scene to other ERs, be that patient request, or say we're on scene, we know we have a STEMI, which would be a heart attack, we're gonna take it directly to a cath lab. Two were flown from the scene. Thirty-five transfers that we had went straight to pit from here, from our ER to pit. Twenty-one transfers went to other facilities via Joplin, Kansas City, Nevada, Allen County, Gerard.
Can you, hang on a second.
Okay.
Thirty-five to, to Via Christie, twenty-one to other?
Yes. We had fifty-five dry runs. Twelve of those dry runs were canceled prior to arrival on scene. At this point, for this month, we already have fifty-six calls. So we're on point to have two-hundred-plus again this month, if it, if we stay where we're at. We, I did make an update and a change to our transfer policy. We're, at this point, we're not taking any non-emergent transfers after the hours of oh-three-hundred to oh-seven-hundred. We will only be taking stat transfers at those hours. And I've advised, I updated the policy. Dr. Burke, our medical director, signed off on it. We have advised Via Christie, if it is a true stat transfer, they need to be contacting Flight Services. Myself or John Lowry have also offered, if they are busy, we will help, call us. We will help contact Flight Services. If Flight Services are grounded due to weather, or pilot is out of hours, we will take the transfers. At this time, I wanna introduce you, Trey Sevens and Austin Barr. They've recently graduated paramedic school, and are now operating, they have passed their test and are now operating as paramedics. They will also, they've also been in touch and been working closely with Osage, and they're gonna discuss with you, um, possible remounts of two of our trucks.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Little hard test, wasn't it?
It, it was a very hard test.
It was.
Several, uh, so yeah, just before we get into it, a lot of people don't know the difference between EMT and paramedic. Um, EMT is more of a basic level, provides BLS service and basic life support. ALS is advanced life support, uh, more life-saving opportunities, uh, more of an asset to the community as well. We're more of the level of an RN at this point. Uh, we can actually bridge to RN, go back and forth. So we can hand off to a nurse, we can receive from a nurse, and so it's a, a great asset to the community, and we, uh, hope to do a good job for you.
Welcome aboard. Thank you for coming.
Yep.
Glad to have you.
Well, we appreciate it. So, uh, right now, we're gonna start discussing with you. We've got, right now, we have two older ambulances.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna expand on the fact that the paramedics, I think the public needs to understand, I am a nurse, um, but what Austin's saying is absolutely true. Not, and EMT's great, a paramedic's just better. Um, these guys can literally save your life, more so than probably most RNs, to be honest.
Good. I have a problem coming to my house.
So, I mean, congratulate, I mean, congratulations. I absolutely appreciate it, what you're doing.
Thank you.
And, um, I mean, I, I wish we had twenty paramedics available.
We do too.
Because, because really, uh, truthfully, the, uh, the people need to understand that, um, EMT can save your life too. This is just a step that much better.
I mean, we can, you can start IVs, we can push drugs.
They can, they can, you can.
It allows you to do a lot of stuff. Yep, yep.
Inside that ambulance to, uh, get you to, uh, to a location.
Yep.
That otherwise could not be done, and that's really, really important, and, um, Jason, I would, I would, I would, I would ask that maybe you spend a little time with these guys later, and kinda, because what they can do is really, really impressive, so, anyway, sorry, I'll talk about your truck.
Not at all. That being said, we're only as good as our equipment. Um, we have two ambulances right now that are getting up in miles, um, so getting high mileage, less reliability. One of them that we're looking at right now has been in the shop three times this month already, so three times in a week, approximately. Um, Trey's gonna kind of expand on our options here. What we're looking at are remounts, which there's, you can either get a remounted ambulance, where they take the box, refurbish the box, and put it on a new chassis, uh, new engine, new frame, um, reduces your miles, and you get a second life out of your ambulance box.
And some boxes can be remounted three, four, or five times, depending on how well we've taken care of it, which compared to other services that we've seen in Kansas City during clinical hours, you know, to get our medic, we take very good care of our boxes, so, and that's what the guy that, uh, with Osage that has come and talked to us, that's what he has expressed as well. So, uh, we'll be getting decent pricing out of it, or.
They give you a little bit of a kickback from that.
Did we approve two remounts a few months ago?
We approved one.
One, okay.
Um, and I, and I told them today, you know, it's good for us to discuss it.
Yeah.
And we'll kinda see if the funding's available through the ARPA funds.
Right, yeah. That'd be a good place for the ARPA funds, yeah.
So you did approve one.
Yeah.
That bid is outdated.
Okay.
They, they only last around thirty days, so.
Yeah, so on here, with this, this whole stack of papers is basically three builds, three options that we have. That's gonna skip thirty days without them reviewing it or anything. If we were to sign on it, it would be, you know, good. Um, we're looking at upgrading from the type-three chassis to a type-one chassis. We've got a couple pictures here to kinda show you the differences between them, and then we'll go into like the logistics of them, and how they, they differ, and how they're better, the type-one.
So the, the main difference between the type-one and the type-three is the type-one chassis is a truck chassis. Um, it would come with four-wheel drive, and the type-three is a fifteen-passenger van chassis. Um, so we've got some comments on those.
So the, the truck, like you said, it'll be four-wheel drive. Um, it will be gas.
This is the type-one you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes, type-one. Um, they have, so, safety-wise, they're a longer wheelbase, so they're a little bit safer as far as that goes. Um, they've got a, a larger front end, um, to absorb more impact. Should you get in a wreck, hopefully we don't, but should you get in a wreck, uh, the front end on them is a lot stronger. They're a lot more durable, um, to, uh, stand up to gravel roads, you know, any kinda county road, or anything like that. Um, suspension is nice. The suspension on the type-one truck will be upgraded, um, on all of those types of trucks that you buy. They actually take out the suspension that comes from Ford, and they put in what's called a liquid spring suspension. It auto-levels. It's a lot safer. Um, that's what they put in all of those types of trucks. They put them in RVs, they put them in, um, commercial vehicles to make it safer.
Stability.
Better handling.
Stuff, yeah.
Um, and it provides a smoother ride for the patient, and safer ride, because it's smoother, safer for the patient and the patient care provider that's in the back. Um, just on the front end, it will be four-wheel drive, um, which will be nice for, I mean, we've had to go out into pastures before to get patients that are way down in, and we're like, well, can we do it? Can we not? We've got several county fire trucks here if we need to pull, be pulled out. Um, so that would eliminate that, as well as in winter time during inclement weather. Um, just on suspension differences, uh, the.
The, the remount.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the, um, let me just finish this here. The ease of maintenance on the type-one trucks, um, is a big thing. We've talked with Tom, who does our. We've talked with Tom, who does our maintenance on all of our trucks, and he would be ecstatic to get them because instead of having the, the engine mounted kind of in between the, the cab of the truck and the front and the hood, it's all up front. The engine doesn't come into the cabin area where we sit or anything, it's all up front just like a regular vehicle. In the vans, we have a little bit of a doghouse that, you know, if something happens, if we were to place the engine on one of our trucks now, they would have to lift the box and the whole cab off and do that.
So you're hopefully looking at less labor time when you go in for maintenance.
Right, so less cost to there. If we get these and we do free, future remounts on those trucks, it will be cheaper than the initial cost, the initial cost will be more, but in the future, it will be less. And the life expectancy of these trucks are longer because of the upgraded suspension and everything.
Under the operation you have today, how many years would you think this truck would be before it needs to be remounted?
Before it needs to be remounted, we've got trucks now that have been in service for 10 years.
Quite a while.
So we're looking at a long period.
We're looking at 10 to 12 years at least, hopefully, before it needs to be remounted. So, when you look at costs, you're looking at like, what, I think $25,000 a year is how you break it down at 10 years. That's if you had to go in completely. So, I'll touch a little bit about what a remount is. Basically, they take a box, the box that's on our trucks, they take it off, they strip it down completely inside and out to the bare frame, and then they completely refurbish it, put everything new back in it, and it's a savings of about 25 to $50,000 to keep your box. So, and then you basically take that new refurbished box and you mount it onto a brand-new chassis. So, we've looked, we have prices for remounting two of the trucks that we have, which is EMS one and EMS three. One is a Chevrolet Duramax that has 233,000 miles roughly. And then the other one is EMS three, it's a six-oh Power Stroke, had a lot of emission issues with it and it's been in the shop, that's the one that's in the shop right now, actually. Each of those with an upgraded power load cot system. We price those in there because they're a lot safer, that is the industry standard now. Kansas doesn't regulate it, unfortunately, but in Missouri, they regulate it to where any brand-new truck or any remounted box has to have that system. So you basically push the cot up, it locks in, you push a button and it self-loads the patient versus us standing there having to lift and put them in. So these prices are with that $42,000, $43,000 cot system in there.
Okay.
So that includes that. To remount EMS one would be $199,594.05. That's the Duramax. To remount EMS three, the Ford Power Stroke would be $198,889.05. And then the third option that we had priced was the type one, upgrading to a type one chassis, which would be the truck chassis. Basically, we talked with David Vance, the guy at Osage that's been our contact as far as this goes, and he said if we wanted to get into that, we have to get rid of our boxes, our boxes structurally can't mount onto a truck chassis, so we would sell them our boxes for $8,000 per truck. And then we would be buying an Osage-supplied box that they have bought back from another company, they've checked it out, make sure it's safe, it's structurally fine, and they basically gut it, refurbished it, do the same thing that they would with one of ours that's remounted, and then they mount that onto a truck chassis, it'd be an F-550 with a 7.3 gas, four-wheel drive, and that cost would be $250,374.05. So you're looking at roughly a $50,000 to $52,000 difference there. However, looking at longevity, the safety, and the upgraded suspension, stuff like that, I think it would be well worth it. And like I said, going further in the future, remounting that would not be that expensive. You'd be looking at the $200,000 remount instead of $250.
With that being said, the Stryker Power Cot System is going to have their price raised nine percent by October. They said we can go ahead and order them now and store them in the back building for the price that they have us locked in at. We would save approximately $8,000 by doing that, by ordering two systems now. We can store them for however many years and five years later, we could put them in a, put them in our ambulance if we got approved for that.
And this is also a lengthy process, so.
We're looking at two years.
We're looking at 2024 by the time we would get these trucks. So, that $250,000 would be if we ended up selling them both of our type three trucks, we would be getting two type ones at the $250,000.
Per truck.
Per truck. And like I said, they would be giving us $8,000 per ambulance, so you'd have a $16,000 cutoff of the 500 and some thousand dollars. And then, also, Osage, one of the reasons we went with Osage is because they're the ones that have manufactured these trucks from the get-go, that's who makes our trucks, and they offer a lifetime warranty on their box. If we were to go with somebody else that was a lot cheaper, that could cut costs, whatever, they would not offer that warranty.
Okay.
So.
They're, they're also local, they're from Lynn, Missouri, so it's about three, three and a half hours. So if we do have any troubles, they're right there for maintenance instead of going to Florida for a different company.
Good.
That's what we're looking at. So if we could, we're looking at approval for two, if not at least one, of the type one ambulances, so that we can get into those. The total for those two ambulances with the cot systems included would be $500,748.10. That being said, you don't pay for your ambulance until you receive it, so we would be locking in at a price now, and these are priced a little bit higher, when they go into the build specs, they, they price them as high as they can so that you don't have any overshoot on your budget.
Because there's, there's a good chance that.
Will come in under.
Yes.
Under that, and then they would kick that back to the county.
But to bring it to you guys, we wanted to price it high, that way, if something were to happen, you know, this is what we're looking at for max cost, but hopefully, we would be getting a kickback. I understand it is a.
Don't use that word in this room. Now, kickback, don't say that anymore.
I understand.
I understand.
Might be coming out of a, a fund that has a time limit, so what, Osage, we talked to them about that, what they can do is if we need to spend the money by a certain time, they can put that into a.
CD.
CD account, and they will just leave it there until we get our trucks, and then they will give the excess or keep whatever, whatever it needs to be.
Well, I think it's a great idea, Clifton, I mean, we gotta spend a little time with Susan.
Yep.
Make sure the dollars where they might come from and what our plans are, of course, moving forward, but certainly something we certainly need. It's obvious with them too, in the shop all the time, so.
Yes.
How many trucks do you have? First off, how much is a power cot?
Power load, for the power load system with the cot, it's $42,402.05.
Okay. Okay, 42, 400, um, how many trucks you got?
Six.
Six trucks today? Okay, ha, just out of curiosity, the six-oh, I mean, wha, what's going on, I mean, has it been bulletproofed, do we know?
It is not.
It is not.
Okay, why? Why have we not bulletproofed it? That's.
I agree.
You know, at 75,000 miles, those trucks need bulletproof, everybody knows that.
But we, we've taken that, before we were the city, we didn't get any kind of funding there because of that, and they also were worried about, well, if this is not on the up and up as far as like legally, whatever, emissions, I don't know, so they couldn't get it done.
They didn't want to delete any emissions.
They didn't want to delete anything.
50,000 of them running across the country, I have one, I personally have one.
Yeah, we tried.
Okay, I'm just curious, I mean, it's kinda.
We, we tried.
So we wanted to because of all the problems we're having, they were worried about cost, they were worried about taking off emissions.
Cost, it's just gonna keep nickel and diamond.
We have to replace injectors at least two or three times in this truck, which is several thousand.
It's blown head gaskets twice.
Sure, it's gonna.
It'll keep doing that.
It's gonna, it's, it's not gonna stop.
No.
Until we bulletproof it with OEM parts, by the way.
Right, right.
Not the aftermarket stuff, it has to be bulletproofed with OEM parts.
Yeah.
So my recommendation would be to look at, I mean, get a price for that.
Sure.
Because there's, and, I mean, it's, it doesn't make any sense to me.
No, I agree, I agree.
Cause you're just gonna keep spending money on that, on that motor.
Yep, absolutely. So, anything else, Trace?
Had a school to work on and start reviewing it.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it, so.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thanks much.
Thank you for coming. Cereal malt beverage permit.
I have, it's a renewal for a cereal malt beverage license for KC Mark.
Make a motion to approve the license permit for KC Mark for cereal malt beverage.
I second that, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye, and our license permits cost $50 if anybody is interested in knowing that.
Gas contract for medical building.
Ashley's actually been working on this. We had, I don't remember, a few months ago, had, had, signed a contract with Hamlin and they basically do all of our bidding for us for gas contracts, and our contract was up at the medical building. We were with Symmetry, but they have come back with Clearwater Enterprises as being the lowest at this time, and so we're just asking that you approve this contract so we can move forward with getting a better, better price.
So we keep gas coming in at the building?
Yeah, so we can get gas coming into the building.
I say so. I make a motion to approve, again, the contract that we've already approved, I don't understand all that, but, I know, I know it, I know it, I know it, I'm just, I'm being facetious, yes. I make a motion that we, we go with this recommended Clearwater contract for the medical building.
Transportation of gas.
Transportation of gas.
I second that motion, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Jim, let's, can we take a few minute break?
Yes.
Before Justin's.
Evan, recommend a break, so we're gonna go into executive session for at least 30 minutes.
Yeah, just a few minutes.
Thank you. Susan and Joe's working up to do.
She didn't watch YouTube.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no audio or something.
Oh, YouTube's not working.
It's YouTube.
Oh. Our, our system's working, not the way it's supposed to, but, very frustrating. Very frustrating.
So it's just not streaming?
Happy late birthday, old man.
Thank you.
Well, you have a kid now, you know? Let's be nice, you'll be 48.
Well, I'm like, I'm like, we're the youngest, right?
You are the youngest, that's right, yeah. You were 17 when you graduated from high school, right?
I think so.
Yeah, you were. Your birthday was just.
Your birthday's a little early, yeah.
That was a long time ago.
Thirty years ago.
Really, you could, you could have been the classmate behind you.
Yeah, I was close.
Yeah.
I was almost 93, class of 93.
93?
Is that my brother's class? 93?
No, that would have been 93, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, he, he didn't want to be in my brother's class.
Yeah.
He's not done, or has he got?
No, he's got one class each, two semesters.
Yeah, little kid. Pick up with this in the studio. Sure. This time last year. I mean, it's happy. The only thing I despise about that program is it's all based on their perspective, you know, their judgment, it's not a pass/fail, you know, I mean, you don't, you get this right, you get there, it's whether they think you're good enough or not, you know, so, it's tough, tough program.
Well, there's a reason it's considered tough, five or 10, depends how much you agree with it.
Yeah.
The, I don't, Ella's live, but she's picky, she's gonna do whatever, tells her.
Sure, yeah. Well, she'll get into a little more of it this, this.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
All right, are we ready, Clifton?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Justin Meeks.
Ashley's not here.
Oh, we gotta wait on the county clerk, don't we?
Yep, that's what I was, seeing where she was here, she's gonna take notes.
She wants YouTube later.
Since it's not on YouTube.
It is.
I pressed down recording, he's told me.
Oh, really? Says live.
I'll present you your official copy of the United States Constitution.
I already have one.
We'll be at slater.
YouTube is having an issue, we don't know what it is, that's why I'm just hitting, I hit record to try to manually do it, we'll see what happens, I mean, it doesn't matter.
No.
I'm trying to service this thing.
I got you, we have zero viewers.
Mr. Hoyt?
I did, I just saw zero concurrent viewers.
Yeah, that's cause it's not streaming.
Mr. Hoyt's the thorny.
Somebody has to take the job of keeping them straight.
You have, he has failed miserably.
Mr. County Count.
Commissioners, I ask for one of the longer executive sessions I've had in a while, I need 30 minutes, it, it's a hodgepodge of discussions, we're gonna be talking about personnel matters, we're gonna be talking about contract negotiations, we're gonna be talking about just a lot of different things that are gonna be occurring this week with different negotiations, so, it is attorney-client privilege, it's contracts and personnel issues. I'd ask that the two commissioners come, I know Mr. Blythe is not a commissioner yet, but I do need his input, he is an expert in some areas that I need some input in, I need Susan to also be involved in the executive session. There should be no action, there could possibly maybe be some action, but probably not, and we actually might go back in after the 30 minutes if that's not enough.
I make a motion to go into executive session, KSA 75-4319B2 for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, personnel matters, contract negotiations, be two commissioners, myself and Mr. Harris, Justin Meeks, Susan Bancroft, and Nelson Blythe. 30 minutes, sorry, we'll return here at 10:19, I guess.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
So the recording, it's just not streaming?
It's what I'm trying to do.
Okay. It's really nice when you can go back then.
I, I, I know, I know. Don't know if it ever started. I don't know, I mean, when.
I don't think it's ever been on there.
We call, see, it's still showing, it's live, it's shown later.